Everyone, good evening.
Good evening, Greg.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2020-2021 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliberations. Today is April 27, 2020, and we are continuing the remote meetings for the Department Presentation portion of the automatic budget process. As we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the City of Milford's website. If a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature via Zoom. Please do not speak other than, over the individuals, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name and address prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Here.
Alderman. Alderman Hardeman.
Alderman Harlan.
Here.
Was that Alderman Harlan?
I'm here.
Thank you. Alderman Parente.
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith. Alderman Windrup Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Here.
Alderman Beech.
Here.
Can't hear you if you called me, right?
Yes, I did.
I'm here, but you broke up, so I didn't hear my name called.
Alderman Willis.
He seems to be having trouble with his connecting.
Here, Alderman Willis, here.
He's on.
Thirteen present.
Thirteen present. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a quorum. I will entertain a motion to come out of recess.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're out of recess.
Aye.
The first department organization on our agenda is Human Resources Department, page 41.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tanya Barnes. I'm the Human Resources Director with the city. Overall, my budget is a flat budget. There's a very slight increase, a total increase in the budget that I request. I, $600, $550. Those two lines are in our membership line from $650 to $700, just to account for increases in memberships and SHRM and Compelra and some other associations that my office is a member of. And then in our office apply line that has been $1,000 for the last six and a half years since I've been with the city. And we usually always run short there, so I requested $500. Just a quick little overview of the office. We're a small team, four people total. Last year, in collaboration with the Finance Department, we implemented a new HRS and payroll system that went live July of 19. And that went very, very well. It was a huge migration from a DOS-based system to now an automated system with lots of functionality. We recruited for key positions such as the Treasurer Payroll Administrator, the Assistant Director of Public Works. We filled positions in the HR department that were vacant, such as the HR Generalist and HR Assistant, and most recently, we filled the position of Director of Operations in the marina. We continue to work in recruitment and are currently working on the Public Works Office and Administrative Operations Manager, and then Open Space and Sustainability Manager, a Construction Manager, our IT Manager, and a couple other ones. I work closely with the City Attorney's Office with contract negotiations, grievance resolutions, and mediations, unemployment hearings that I handle, and CHRO hearings. On the wellness front, we were, this year, once again, recognized as a workplace that focuses on wellness by the Fairfield County Business Council and receive a platinum award. And on the benefits side, we went out for an RFP for healthcare consultant. In March, we secured USI that will be assisting us through negotiations in the coming months. And that's all that happened unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Does any of the Aldermen have any questions for the Human Resources Department? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, Tanya. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Good, good. So I just want to pick up where we left off last, last budget cycle. I know that the Board approved your request for a Human Resource Assistant. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, can you just give me some background on the Human Resource Generalist? Because I don't recall discussing that position. Was that something that you just filled most recently?
No, I've had that position for a while about when I first started with the city. So maybe five years ago or so, the position was classified as an administrative personnel, administrative assistant personnel, and we retitled it to HR Generalist.
Can you define that? Because I'm not real familiar with that terminology.
Oh, sure. An HR Generalist is somebody that is a professional level position, works in recruitment, works on wellness initiatives. Now that we have an actual HRS system, that gentleman is responsible for maintaining the information and the data and the human resource information system that is all electronic now, and that is connected to the Payroll Department. So when we make any changes, any new hires in the systems, any promotions, any step increases, those flow into the payroll automatically. So now it's less paperwork, but there's somebody has to be managing that system. So that's done by a professional level person. The HR Assistant is a entry-level clerical position that supports me, supports the Generalist, and the Benefits and Pension Coordinator with a lot of clerical work.
Okay, just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that the Pope, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec Department is, was that a position posted for Director? I know that there was a retirement there, and do you know when that position will be filled?
Yes, we did post for the position. We did receive about 30 applications. We're in the process of reviewing those and working with the mayor's office in the recruitment process.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. Thank you for answering all the questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Is there any other Alderman? Alderman Gaynor, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Tanya, I see on the, one of the positions that you have is Pension Benefit Coordinator, and the salary seemed to jump about $8,000 from last year. Could you explain that, please?
The Benefits and Pension Coordinator position, that was adjusted to be in line with the Generalist position. There are two professional level positions. As I said, the Generalist really focuses on the recruitment side, the wellness, and the HRS system. The Benefits and Pension Coordinator, when I first started with the city, the benefits piece was sort of piecemeal. There were some pieces in accounting, there were some pieces in finance, and there were some pieces in HR. And we've taken all that administration into the HR department, so it's truly a one-stop shop for employees as they come onboard and can do all their onboarding with the HR Generalist and the Benefit Specialist in terms of benefits, health benefits, pension benefits. And then as they're exiting, the same thing. The Benefits and Pension Coordinator is the person that's doing the pension calculations, going through all of the retiree benefits with them, life insurance, and so forth. So it's definitely been elevated in terms of the workload, and it's, that was the rationale to keep them both at par.
Follow-up question. Is it the same person who was, was doing it last year? Was it a reevaluation of the position or is it a new position? I'm sorry.
It's, it's a new position. She was hired this, this February.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Tanya. I'm sorry, Tanya, you were breaking up a little bit, so I hope I'm not repeating myself or, I just hope that I heard you correctly. So the filled positions in the HR department with the extra help, do you find that things are running more smoothly with more help?
We certainly are and definitely, we were doing a lot of catch-up. As I said, we converted a payroll HRS system. That was a project that took about 18 months, and not only was I the HR Director, I was also the project manager for that component. And so we put in a lot of hours and a lot of work to literally build that HR, Human Resource Information System from the ground up. We never had one before. And so a lot of things sort of got put in the back burner. But certainly now that we are fully staffed and my department became fully staffed this, this February, we are doing a lot of catch-up, and we're certainly working through things that were sort of in the back burner. But everybody has a full plate, and we're moving forward.
And I also heard that permits for people pulling permits in the building department, they're still coming in. It's actually making it a lot easier with the way things are being done. If you haven't already, do you plan on posting for that fourth building inspector? Are you going to wait till after the coronavirus pandemic?
I think at this point, since we just hired an inspector a couple of months ago, I want to say he started four, a permanent inspector. And my conversation with the Director of Public, permitting and land use, rather, is that we're going to wait until the pandemic passes and then look to fill that position.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Abaidali.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Tanya, how are you? I hope you're, I hope you're safe and everything's going well. Can you just tell me, is your office operating any differently now with this pandemic than you were operating prior to?
We're trying to keep business as usual. Obviously, we're working on staggered shifts where we try to have two people in the office at a time, and the other time, everybody's working remotely. But everyone has a laptop, everybody can access all of the city systems, including Munis, which is our HRS payroll system. We have continued to do recruitment, and as I said, there were some things that were sort of put in the back burner, and we're pushing along on those, and we've done a lot of interviewing through Zoom. Most recently, last, last Friday, we were interviewing for a payroll supervisor. Right now, we've been having an acting supervisor, so we're keeping, trying to do as much as we can and continue moving along. So I think I'm trying to keep it as normal. And I know with Gail, she's met with a few employees who want, are looking to retire, and she's done those through Zoom as well.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chair, going forward, do you find that you will probably be picking up any of the practices that you are incorporating today to when this pandemic would be over? Or you're going to go back to the usual normal, rather than a new normal kind of situation in the office?
Well, I think in general, overall, there's so much unknown, but I think that overall is going to be a new normal. Certainly, we would like to go back to certain ways, but I think that we are still going to have to be cognizant of the social distancing. We're still have to be aware of those factors and ensuring that everybody is healthy. But certainly, you're going to look at things that have worked out well, were there opportunities to do things differently? Whether, you know, it allows for, I think a lot of governments, talking with colleagues, have learned that, you know, we could be a little bit like the private sector and do more telecommuting and things of that nature. Where in the past, it was something that we never really considered until this situation came about and then became very resourceful. But certainly, ensuring that we have the infrastructure to do things like that and having the technology to be able to be a little bit more flexible as well, we would certainly use those things to move forward with.
Having said that, and in the new look that might take place after the, this pandemic, if we get to that new normal, will that encourage you or prompt the office to look a little different with less staff?
Um, I don't know, because I, I don't think so. Because, as I said, with, one of the things with building a new HRS system is then again, there were some pieces that were, and not to the extent that we have now, some pieces in IT, some pieces in accounting, some pieces in finance, and then some in HR. And now we've taken all of that into one unit. So every transaction, every personnel action that takes place in the city comes through my office now. We're the ones maintaining that data, not only electronically in the HRS system, but obviously in the paper form as we did in the past. And we're also working and scanning all of our files to ensure that we have them on an electronic basis as well, which is a huge project since in the past, we only had everything on paper. We still, you know, when we put, go up for recruitment, there are many positions that we get, high-volume applicants. Last fall, we posted for Clerk A, and we had over 150 applicants. Routinely, we, I didn't include that in my presentation, but last year alone, we reviewed over 600 applications and over 500, just an indeed, in an electronic platforms. So it's a very paper-intensive, even if it's on an electronic basis, work that we are doing within our department. And with the benefits and the pension side too, as I said, we only used to do pension when I first came onboard, and now we've overhauled and taken over the benefits for actives and retirees, the Life Insurance Administration, and we're meeting all of that with the active and retiring employees. Open enrollment, all those activities, they were not part of my office when I first took over.
So the office maintains four of you. Is that four positions?
Yeah.
Four people? And so with a new normal, you don't see any consolidating of any of those positions that they will be at full throttle, full throttle all the way through? Even with what is going on with telecommunications and everything else?
Yes.
So as I'm trying to say is that, once we get back to a new normal, you still, those four positions are still critical, and there would be no, no conversation of consolidation within the positions? Re-scoping some of the work or personnel?
Well, I think that one of the considerations, one of the reasons we brought the position in the last budget was because of, as we were restructuring and bringing so many of these pieces into the HR office, the two people and myself weren't going to be able to handle it all. And having that third support person that not only supports me, but the Generalist and the Benefits and Pension Person, it's critical. I mean, we, like I said, there's a lot of work that goes into it, but I would rather have an assistant supporting us, and for instance, with our benefit, our pension packets. Every month, the Benefits and Pension Coordinator coordinates the pension meeting, puts together the agenda, all the materials, the packets, and so forth. Then we have to generate 35 packets that get mailed out. Well, I would rather have a HR assistant making those packets in terms of copying them, putting them in the mail and so forth, than having my professional level person working on calculations and benefit changes and things of that nature, and the reporting that goes along with it, than to be bogged down in a copy machine when that's something that the assistant can be doing.
So you don't look to, with a new normal, you don't look to any consolidating? The four positions are extremely important in order for the work to be, to be done. Period. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Gaynor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a sense of how many arbitrations, mediations, or grievances were in the past year? And if they are more or less than the year before?
Yes, I can tell. We had, we processed 12 grievances. We participated in four mediation MPP hearings, 13 arbitration hearings that may have been the same thing, but it happened over a couple of days. I attended three unemployment hearings and two CHRO hearings. And it's about what was in the prior year as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other Aldermen would like to have questions for Human Resources Department? Hearing none. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All of our questions. You have a good night.
You too, safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Have a good night. At this point, the first department organization, the next department organization on our agenda is the Bridges Community Healthcare Incorporated, page 89.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is John Dixon. I'm the President and CEO of Bridges Healthcare.
Good evening, John.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. You're looking well.
Minus my hair growing out a little. Not sure how I am. Joining me virtually tonight is Bridges Chief Financial Officer, Carlos Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Want to thank the City of Milford, the mayor, and the Board of Aldermen for your ongoing support of Bridges over the years. Just to talk specifically about the budget of the $380,000 that Bridges is looking to receive from the City of Milford, approximately 380, 360,000 of the 380,000 will be going to our outpatient clinics. We provide outpatient individual and group therapy to children and families, to adults who have mental health and substance abuse issues. And we've served approximately 1,000 Milford residents annually in that program. Even in these challenging times, we continue to remain open. We're providing our services through telehealth. And we're operating at about 70% of what our normal rate of operations would be even in these times. The additional, almost $20,000 of the City of Milford funding goes to our Be Safe program that provides sexual health and reproductive education. This past year, we've provided This past year, we've provided services to 346 students in schools through health class presentations. And we've provided 48 individual support and work with kids through the school and in their community. That program continues to function while we're in these challenging times as well. We're providing individual support to 20 students. Our staff continue to meet with and plan with school personnel. We are recording webinars to replace health class presentations in the near future. And we're taking referrals for that program. So while things have changed pretty dramatically, we continue to maintain services in both our outpatient clinics and in the Be Safe Program. I think just to kind of close and then take questions, just like every other agency, we're faced with a lot of challenges during these times. And the City of Milford funding is more critical than ever. In particular, after July 1. We're going to need that money to meet what we feel is going to be a tremendously increased amount of need for our services as a result of both social isolation and the pandemic. We're going to need that to offset losses that we've incurred due to a decrease in services related to telehealth. It's just not for everybody. We're going to need money to restart, ramp back up for in-person, one-on-one and group offerings. And also so that we can maintain jobs and not have to take any action regarding layoffs or furloughs with our staff. That's it.
Thank you, John, for your well organized presentation. Any other comments from any alderman? Alderman Beatty.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairperson. Thank you, John, and welcome to this session. I know I speak for everybody on the board, but I have been amazingly impressed by how the organization has been nimble enough to both decrease services and yet enhance services in a different format. So before we shift to talks about consolidation, I'm glad that you brought up the increased demands that may occur from telehealth, that it's not for everybody. And one-on-one clinical services have been interrupted. And you have managed to, with your staff, very creative, hardworking staff, manage to continue to deliver in a fiscally financial way, prudent way, and yet clinically effective. But we don't know what is going to happen with clients after July 1st, as you so well put it. And I wonder if you'd elaborate a little bit more on that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderman Beatty. First of all, we applied for and did receive funds through the CARES Act. Those funds through the Paycheck Protection Program allow us to basically continue with our services through the end of this fiscal year. We will, so that really does put us in a nice position to be able to continue out providing services, not take staff action, not lay staff off, continue to not just meet the needs of folks who participate in our reimbursable services, but all the folks who utilize our services. And so we'll be able to do that without interruption through June 30th. Beginning July 1, we don't know what the state's going to do. And without any commitment, and I think it's been rather notable that when asked directly, questions are sort of, answers are not necessarily given directly related to the ability to carry over funds. We'll be right back in the same position that we were before we were able to receive that Paycheck Protection Program funding. So that our reimbursable services will be operating at a decreased rate. So less revenue will be coming into the program, to the agency as a whole. And that's what City of Milford dollars go towards is offsetting some of the money that we need to operate beyond what Medicaid reimburses us. But even with then decreased ability to bill for those Medicaid services, that puts us in all the more difficult of a position. In addition, you know, Bridges provides services that other agencies don't to populations that are most vulnerable. So while we have clinicians doing individual and group work, we also have our case managers still working in the community, shopping for folks, tending to banking, meeting folks' needs in the community. And so the further we go into this, support without continued funding, the more we're going to be stretched to continue to provide services in all our programs. And as you folks are well aware, some of those folks really are the toughest to serve as well as the most needy that the City of Milford has.
Thank you, John. I think that it's critically important for you to outline the challenges that are ahead and the vague future that we face. And your concern for delivering services in whatever form to people and having the proper resources. So I thank you.
Thank you. And just to add, Alderman Beatty, you know, I think we have seen an increased rate of use in our mobile medication assisted treatment van over the last year. I think when I talked with you folks last year, we were just launching that van. In this past year, we served eight times the number of people that we had previously served in all of our opioid treatment programming prior to that, over the previous couple of years. And I have to think that knowing the nature of opioid abuse, opioid addiction, that this type of social isolation and limited social interactions really is going to create some major issues related to the need for treatment.
And can you tell us a little bit more about how you partner with other agencies? I know you're very involved with the leaders of similar organizations that have a mission and the concern that they have about substance abuse, opioid addiction, suicide prevention, and all the problems that are enhanced by the current situation?
Certainly, we, you know, we, my 18 months there, we partner very closely, both locally and at a statewide level. At a statewide level, we are one of seven nonprofit local mental health authorities, meaning that we provide an array of services unlike other organizations to meet the needs of those folks who otherwise couldn't receive those services. And so I work very closely with the six other CEOs as we think about and strategize how we can best continue to support folks even in times like these. Locally, I think that we are working harder to be a good community partner in Milford. We participate actively as part of the homeless collaborative work that is currently taking place in the city. We continue to try to meet the needs, the mental health and substance abuse needs of folks who touch other agencies. We certainly work closely with the United Way and are part of the Council of Executives that help and work closely with the 21 agencies that receive funding from the United Way. And, you know, we're just about ready to come to a completion of developing, building a strategic plan. And our guiding principle behind that plan is to really hone in and focus on services in our existing communities. We're not looking to expand geographically. We're not looking to, you know, provide stuff outside of the realm of what behavioral health is. We're looking to better support the Milford, West Haven and Orange community in particular. And so as the result of this plan, as the result of the implementation of this plan, we believe that we're going to be able to create that array of services that people with behavioral health needs in Milford need in order to be successful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other alderman? Alderman Gainer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Is the, well, I mean, not currently, but is the Room 4 facilities, was it still operational or will it continue to be operational around COVID?
Thanks for asking that, Alderman Gainer. One of the first steps we were forced to take, and I think, I want to say this was back on March 18th, was the closing of our social rehabilitation programs, both Room 4 and the Open Door Wellness Center. At the same time, we stopped providing groups in person as well. The groups we're providing and those two settings, we were not able to comply with what would be considered appropriate, appropriate social distancing. So in the interest of public safety, we shut down those programs. Our staff, though, at Room 4 and our staff at the Open Door Wellness Center, continue to work hard to support their clients. So the day we had to close those services down, the staff were on the phone supporting the folks, the kids at Room 4, the adults at the Open Door Wellness Center by phone. And now through telehealth, as we've been able to develop the capacity through telehealth, our, our young adult and children population know more about this world than we ever dreamed of knowing until this crisis. They're still well ahead of us. So I think we have a lot to learn there. And most recently, at Room 4, we've been able to do as we're doing here tonight. They've been able to set up the Zoom capacity and are doing groups with kids who are frequent attenders of Room 4, so we're able to support kids probably in a way that they're more comfortable with. So it'll be interesting to see where this takes us in the future. But we look forward to opening Room 4 as soon as we are able.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other aldermen have any questions for Bridges? Seeing none. Thank you, John and Carlos. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Chairman Bietrow.
You're very welcome.
Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you. You too. Have a good night. Alderman Parente, you have something? Alderman Parente, I think you're on mute.
Apologize for that. Through you, Chairman. Just quickly, I'm wondering, I'm very concerned about our healthcare workers, emergency first responders, all of those who live in our community and work in our community. Are there any programs or planned services for them that you anticipate needing more support from the city for as we go forward? Thank you.
Thank you for asking, Alderman Parente. Those are the type of services that we would certainly have looked to be doing on a pro bono basis. I reached out recently to Milford Hospital to let the new administration over there know that we are available to provide individual support as well as group support if they felt that there was a need beyond what they typically offer through their employee assistance programs and thought maybe that there would be some benefit and maybe some more comfort related to their staff participating in a program through Bridges. We've been discussing internally about how best to meet the community's needs and are certainly available. And I thank you for asking that question. And I will certainly be reaching out to Chief Edo and the police department to see if we can meet their needs in any way as well.
Thank you again, John and Carlos. You have a good evening. And thank you for the, for the work that you're doing for the citizens of Milford.
And thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening. The next department organization on our agenda is Consul on Aging, page 87, moves over from April 20th.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So having a little problem there with my headset. Good evening, everyone. My name is Theodore Rodriguez. I'm the Executive Director of the Milford Senior Center. Today I have with me Lillian Holmes, Chairperson of the Milford Consul on Aging. I also have Phil Caparuso, he's a Vice Chair, as well as the Finance Committee Chair. And I have Phyllis Leggett, who is our bookkeeper. So the Milford Senior Center has been in operation for 50 years this year. Established in 1970, we look, we look at serving the specialized needs of the Milford senior population. Our center has, has a staffing of 32 part-time employees, three full-time employees, six employed teachers and 13 independent contractors. Our programs include the Meals on Wheels program, transportation for our, for senior members, mini lunch program, continental breakfast program, and insurance specialists, social services, the Milford Food Bank, and the Aaron's Program. Can you, can you hear me okay still?
Yes.
Okay. On my side, it's a little challenging. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry, but it's got a little messed up here. In terms of our programs, our Meals on Wheels program has delivered approximately 14,000 meals to elderly and disabled clients throughout Milford this last year, which was an increase from last year, about seven and seven and a half percent. Our mini lunch program has also seen an increase from last year as well, whereas we served about 3,200, the previous year, we served 30,000 meals. Our continental breakfast served approximately 8,400 seniors, which was increased as well from the year before. Our insurance specialist that takes care of a lot of the seniors' needs when it comes to social, social security information, was able to serve over 2,000 clients last year. And social services were able to see approximately 7,000 clients with requests ranging from home care assistance, housing referrals, various entitlement programs, and referrals to healthcare and assisted living facilities. The Milford Food Bank assisted 2,600 clients with food, and that was an increase from the year prior. Our membership has grown, although we would love to see more seniors. We currently serve about one-fifth of the senior population of Milford. And our attendance in classes were actually increased. It was, it was wonderful to see our seniors join us for various activities that includes yoga, aerobics, Tai Chi, arts and crafts, ceramics and the whatnot. This is an engaging center with over 2,000 members and is one of the larger ones in Connecticut. Our goal is always to look at the seniors' needs when it comes to their nutritional health, their well-being, both emotionally, physically and mentally. It's an opportunity for people to leave their home, enjoy opportunities with others and to really enjoy life to its fullest. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any aldermen have any questions for the Consul on Aging? Thank you, Theodore for that great presentation. Alderman Grant. Good evening, Chairman. You're on mute, Alderman Grant.
There we go. So first, I really want to say that I hear so many positive things about the Senior Center every year. The wide range of programs that you offer, the ability to, for everybody to get together and socialize the meals. And people definitely rave about the Milford Senior Center. The question I have though is basically the services that you're providing now during the COVID pandemic. I know one of them is a lunch pickup that's offered. I have heard that there can be quite a wait for that, for people to access the lunches. I'm not sure if that might have just been a, when you're getting it going, starting it out. But can you talk about kind of how you're adapting and what you're offering to the, the population now? But can you talk about kind of how you're adapting and what you're offering to the population now?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to hear the last portion of your sentence there. If you could just please repeat.
Would you be able to kind of elaborate on the programs that you're offering now? And you know, how you've adapted to continue serving the population?
Sure. So starting on March 13th, we effectively closed the center to the public. And doing so a couple of days prior, we looked at the mini lunch program. We knew that this is a very, very important program for our seniors. Majority, if not all of our seniors who utilize our transportation, our folks who are coming in to have a nice homemade lunch at our center and to enjoy each other's company, that socialization that's needed. We knew that this was an important program, and it had to happen in some way, shape, or form. So what we did was, two days prior, was that we actually looked at decreasing the numbers of individuals entering our meal program and two settings. So the dining room was reduced from the 90 to about 45, so that there was spacing. When we knew that this pandemic was growing, we knew that we could not risk our seniors being in that space together. So we immediately went into curbside and delivery. So our transportation department, which had approximately 150 members who would utilize the service, went from bringing seniors in to taking meals out and bringing it to them. We have a wonderful staff who is so dedicated. We decided to not only ensure that we were going to be able to feed our seniors, but that we were going to do it in a manner that was safe and effective for all. So I looked at the safety of both my staff as well as the person. So we chose to do two days of meal service, Monday and Thursdays. Mondays, we deliver three mini lunches for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then on Thursday, we deliver again for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Typically, our mini lunch program is a five-days-a-week program. But we knew at this time that six days at minimum would be, we could do seven, we would. But we chose six days, so it was even, and we at least knew they had a little something extra at home. When we weren't sure exactly if we were going to be considered essential, because as a senior center, we're really looked at as a recreational space as well as social services. But we're really looked at as a place where people gather. So we really had to look and say, okay, if in the chance that we were not, we were no longer essential, how would we be able to assist these folks? So we looked at our food bank, and we started creating prepackaged boxes and bags for our seniors and for anyone who needed to come in for food, so that they would still have access without having to come into the center. We chose to do a bag, shelf-stable box for our seniors in March, just in the case that we had to stop our services. But we thankfully have not been having to stop our services. As a matter of fact, since March 13th, we've served 4,260 meals to our seniors here in Milford. The majority are folks that are utilizing our delivery service with our transportation department. And the other portion is coming in through curbside. So right now, we have just over 100 households that are receiving deliveries of our mini lunch. And about today was about 55 individuals who came in for curbside delivery. That's what our mini lunch program is doing now. Our Meals on Wheels program had always had a cap at 60 clients, but thankfully that cap was removed through our partner in LifeBridge. They now are able to kind of push people into the system that really, really needs it versus being tied up in paperwork. They've been able to rearrange it so that we're able to get people, the clients that really, really need this, the truly medically homebound individuals. So now we see those numbers are climbing as well. So we've gone from approximately 50, 55 to 65, and we're moving upwards. I'm not sure if I was able to answer everything. My, there you go. Are there any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Alderman Gian Tasio, thank you, Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Leonora. How are you?
Good. Good evening.
Good. I have a couple of questions. First, I see your grant request was more than what you actually received. It was actually reduced by $181,000. You requested more in your grant. First question, can you tell me why you requested more?
Sure. The additional 180 was for the capital overlays. In coming into the Senior Center, one of the first things I did was to kind of come in with fresh eyes to take a look at how the building was, what is required. And I asked our seniors, what would you like to see here? So there was a couple areas that were neglected in general. One of the things I noticed was that our floor tiles, I could just pick them up with my hand with no effort at all. And the first thing I thought of was safety for our seniors if somehow their foot or their cane or walker was caught in one of those tiles. So I was actually looking at the building as a whole. Our bathrooms need upgrades. There's some handicap accessible bathrooms that really need to be brought up to current standards. So it just seems like some of the things had fallen to the wayside, and my goal was to bring that center back up.
Okay, and just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman. So with that being said, that's not going to happen, being that you didn't obviously get the extra money. You're not going to be able to make those improvements?
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, this was a question that was asked last meeting when the Council on Aging was originally scheduled. I gave a brief background in regard to the request was more, we actually, the Board of Finance and Mayor's Budget actually are funding an amount above and beyond last year. So it's not a reduction, it's an increase. And the amount that it was reduced from the requested amount, as Leonora mentioned, was in regard to capital improvements, improvements that historically with the Senior Center had always been handled through the Public Works Operational Accounts or through funding that the Board of Aldermen had approved, including in this case. And there are some projects that are ongoing right now or have recently been accomplished, like the tile work that the director had mentioned. But we did go into some detail at the last meeting about some of the projects that Public Works was working on or had been authorized at the February meeting of the Board of Aldermen in terms of the funding of it. But those were the things that account for the difference in the requested amount versus what the Board of Finance and the Mayor's Budget contemplate.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Blake, so you mentioned first and foremost that this line item, this grant, was increased. Was that by $3,000 from last year? Because that's what I read in this budget book.
Yeah, it's a small increase above and beyond the amount from last year.
Okay, so how can we help them make these improvements? Because it sounds like they're, you know, like Leonora mentioned, there are safety issues. You know, and we do a lot of this work in-house now through our Public Works Department. So is this something that is going to be done relatively soon?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gian Tasio. Since this request was first propounded back in October of 2019, much of this work has already been done or it's already been funded. This was discussed at the February Board of Aldermen meeting that we had with respect to our capital bonded authorizations. I know that we had a long discussion about this. We had a long discussion last week at the meeting. So yes, most of this has already been accomplished or is underway.
So there's money earmarked for this through our bonding? Is that what you're saying?
Some of the projects, Mr. Chairman, through you, has already been, I guess earmarked to be funded through bonding. Other projects are being funded through the operational accounts, through Public Works, or through other funding mechanisms. Yes, so yes.
Okay, and...
And many have already been accomplished.
And what's the timeframe on the remaining projects that need to be done, such as the tiles?
I know that at least some tile work has already been done. I can get you a estimate from our Public Works Director, who has been working with the Senior Center on some of these projects.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Mayor Blake. And Leonora, just to follow up, I see, I'm assuming that your salary is paid through this grant? Is part of this grant? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, would you be able to share with the members of the board what exactly your current salary is?
I would actually have to look that up.
Okay, all right, if you can get back to us.
I can get back to you.
Okay, that would be good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions.
Alderman Frank Smith. Thank you, Alderman Gian Tasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. This is Frank Smith here. You know, you mentioned in your opening remarks that this is the 50th anniversary of the Milford Senior Center. And I don't know what festivities are planned, but it's a significant milestone. The Milford Senior Center was founded in 1969, 1970 in the basement of St. Mary's Church, of Mary Taylor Church over on the Green. And the founder, Kathy Bissell, was the original director. And in the 50-year history, the half-century of the Milford Senior Center, Milford Council on Aging, they've had two directors, and you are the third, Kathy and Janice Jackson, and now you. So it's, and in those 50 years, it's a very storied and esteemed history, going from a very small, one-room meeting house to the sprawling Senior Center that's probably one or two largest in the state and one of the most active in the country, I believe, always has been and continues to do good work for our community and for our seniors. I remember when I was on the Council on Aging, Mike Petricelli would always bring up, and I'm going to ask you the question, I don't know if you know the answer, how many members there were, how much is the annual dues, and how many people were paying their dues? Used to keep Mike up at night, because it was usually the membership fee was kind of winked at a bit, because some seniors couldn't afford it, but it was $10, and this used to drive them crazy. But since Alderman Gian Tasio asked a question I was going to ask with regard to your grant request, it would be interesting to know how many members you have, if there is still a membership fee, and what percentage of the membership actually pays that fee?
Sure, so we have just over 2,000, actually a little bit more than that. We have 2,000 members that we're currently calling through our wellness checks, but we have approximately 2,200 members in total. Our membership fee right now is at $15 for the year.
And how many people are paying that, do you know, Mr. Rodriguez?
How many people are paying the membership?
Yeah, how much do you actually get out of the 2,200 members, I mean?
I will say, my program director, Amanda Berry, is very good with her volunteers and membership to remind folks to pay their membership. They do make calls, they had been making calls, and letting folks know when their membership was coming up to come in and make a payment. And so it's a good high percentage. I don't have the exact number of the percentage of folks with membership who pay their membership, but it is very high.
That's okay. It wasn't something that troubled me. It was just something that, it was $10 when this first came up, and this could have been 10, 15 years ago. Also, with regard to some of the paid programming, we talked about, this is a granted agency. So as you've just alluded to, your salary and a lot of the expenses come out of that granted money. There's also money the Senior Center receives through other grants and United Way contributions and so forth. I'm not asking for a total on any of those items, but roughly, what portion above and beyond the city grant does the Senior Center use for its day-to-day operations?
So the United Way, last year's grant was $2,100, approximately $2,100. That was to cover the cost for assisting, covering the cost of our Aaron's Program. That amount is actually decreasing this year. And it has been decreasing over the course of the past at least five years, if not longer. So that's really what we get in terms of grants. We do get monies from our membership, as well as donations from our classes that we have, as well as donations from the outside community, individual donors.
And one more question, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Mr. Rodriguez, is there any new initiatives, any either programs or other organizational changes that you, I know you're relatively new. Your predecessors have been there, you know, 30 years at a time. So I understand you're just learning the job. But anything that you want to put your own personal imprint on as far as new programs or new plans for the Milford Senior Center?
Well, one of the first things that really impressed me about the center was the Aaron's Program. The Aaron's Program is our respite program for families who are caregiving for someone with Alzheimer's or related dementia. It's something that's very, very near to my heart, very near and dear to my heart. Not only that I came from an environment where I was working with individuals and families that had a loved one with a dementia, but I myself also had a father with dementia at one point. So I really homed in on the Aaron's Program. And what I saw was a dedicated staff that I had there, Rita Whiskeman and Mary Ann Hayes, who have been combined 47 years of experience in loving and caring for some of our vulnerable individuals, and really caring and loving the families as well. I saw an opportunity for this program to grow. But I also saw a shrinking number from our United Way, which has been excellent. And as you probably know, the Aaron's Program was really founded with $1,000. And that $1,000 has gone a long way in, you know, 49 years. But there's a point that you see yourself, you see what your program is, and you can see where you want the program to go. And when I look at this program, when I look at this program, I see, I am sorry, I spoke as a $21,000 of United Way. What I saw this program, I saw an opportunity for it to grow and to really help more of our families in Milford. Because of that, I did look at ways that we can bridge that gap without making an effect with the grant that we're receiving from the city as much by implementing a fee for our Aaron's Program. I did a lot of research and looking at our program, plus with some prior experience working in Adult Day, I did see how much other places are charging our nearest respite-type program, being in Stratford, there is a charge for the program there of $15. So I looked at the affordability of the program. I looked at what we can do with that money in bringing it back to those people who really need the assistance. So a charge of $10 per day, per... So a charge of $10 per day, per client, per member, was established with the board and ultimately approved by the board. What I saw also was that as much as we do good work for the folks and the errands, the family members, I also saw an opportunity that we were missing, which is what happens when they become out of scope, when they no longer can be in our program, because our program is essentially a social model. We'd say, "Well, I'm sorry, but we can't tend for your loved one any longer, because they need more assistance and we can't provide that." I didn't want to just leave these people there. I wanted to figure out a way where we can set up a system where, when the time came for them to need a medical model facility or a day program, that they already had everything in place. So utilizing the information from the Area Agency on Aging and Alzheimer's Association, we were able to also locate opportunities for families to cover the cost of that $10 per day, effectively, to a point, paying up to 80% of the rate. So that means if they pay $10 a day, it ends up becoming $2 a day for their loved one to attend our program. However, the other side of it is that they're set up so that if the time comes they need to move into a medical model, they're already in the system. They've already gone through the application process, and they can move into another service provider without being in that mix of what should we do? Who do we talk to? I wanted our center to be that place where family members can come and seniors can come and say, "They're the ones who knows seniors best. They're the ones who is going to help us, and they have the people to do it." One of the other things I really looked at is our staff and kind of planning for this future of assisting our community even more so than we have now. Our social service worker, Christine Elias, has gone through training through the dementia. She's now a dementia care professional certified now, which is great, because we now have someone else on our team who's gone through the training for dementia, who's able to help these families. So when people call, she's the one that can assist them. We also started our memory screening, which is the first for our community. And we now can do memory screenings, and we look to do that biannually to help any of the family members, regardless if they're from the errands program or not. Any senior who has someone, or a family member who has someone who they feel may benefit from a memory screening, they can now do that here at our center. So my goal is to establish a center where not only are we engaging people with wonderful, great programs, we're not only feeding some great food, we're not just providing those social services. We're doing more than that. We're making sure that we're just not dropping a person. Because one of the hardest things is that isolation you get once you're no longer part of society, when you're retired from work and you're retired plus, and you need a place to turn to. There is a confidence that people have in the Senior Center throughout, a place where they know that the folks who are there are for them. They're there to help them, and they're there to advocate. So that's where I go. That's where I come from. That's my love that I have, is helping folks and really bringing this Senior Center to a level where it hasn't been before. And if it wasn't for this pandemic in between, you know, I feel I would be a little bit closer to that. But while I have this pandemic happening, what we're doing is continuing to serve our seniors by providing them meals. We are getting creative with our programs. We can't have programs there, so how do we get programs to them? We're doing a Party Line Bingo in May, where people are going to hopefully call in, and they can hear bingo over their own phone, and hopefully bingo out loud and have a little fun. We've delivered indoor gardening kits. It might be dirt, it might be a cup, it might be some seeds, but hopefully it'll develop into something, you know? We've delivered adult coloring booklets, just for people to be able to do a little something out of their norm. We have such a great opportunity to bring this center into another level. And I think honestly, at the end of this pandemic, whenever it happens, senior centers as a whole are going to be different. We are going to have to deal with the social isolation. We're going to deal with people who have been trapped in homes, possibly being neglected or abused as an older adult or an elderly individual. We're going to have to deal with people having various mental wellness, getting back into good mental wellness, physical wellness, and nutritional wellness. So what we're trying to do now is everything.
Well, I appreciate your commitment, your enthusiasm, and I'm sure their confidence is well-placed. I appreciate, Mr. Rodriguez, your contribution to our community, to the Senior Center. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Alderman Smith. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Lamar, how are you?
Good.
Hope you're well. Good, and welcome. There were three things that I wanted to discuss. One was, I wanted you to elaborate for everybody on the errands program, which you did, and I know it's very special to you. The other thing was, when you had said that United Way had funded you $2,100, I didn't think that was correct. It was $21,000, so...
$21,000. I know, I tried to add it in there.
Right, being the president of the Board of Directors of the United Way.
Yes.
I thank you for that. The other thing that you talked about were projects, and there could have been a list of priorities. And when we deal with floor tiles, and even in the schools and everything else, my immediate reaction is asbestos mitigation. So I don't know if that's asbestos, and I don't, maybe the mayor can elaborate on that. So I think that's an important piece, not only for safety-wise, because somebody, the tripping effect, but again, asbestos, moving it around, mitigating it is extremely important. And before, if the mayor wants to just elaborate on that, the other thing to answer Alderman Genotasio's question, and I think Peter Aradisi can add to it, that I know sometimes we don't know how much we make salaries, but I think Peter can fill that number in for you if Tony wanted to know about that. So, Mr. Mayor, please.
Mr. Chairman, the floor tiles, to a large degree, have been an ongoing project for the Senior Center, as well as other city buildings. Those have been addressed. They will continue to be addressed. Some new flooring has already been installed at the Senior Center since this request came in in October. But there are areas in all of our city buildings that we are looking to improve upon, just because of the nature of the type of asbestos tiles in the flooring that was installed back 30, 40 years ago, that continues to remain. We're doing it in a thoughtful way that, again, has the health of our residents and our visitors to the buildings, as well as our city employees. The actual removal of the tires is really the only time where it causes any kind of health issues. So we are making sure to do that with the utmost responsibility when we are doing any type of work that does repair the building, but in the short term, we have to take those precautions.
And I appreciate that, because obviously, we're dealing with one of the most vulnerable populations that we have. So it's good to be taken care of, and I know Leonora has the best interests of the seniors in mind, and I think we need to support that issue. So, thank you. Peter, if you can, I don't know if you have that at your fingertips?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. The Senior Center staff is not on the city's payroll directly. They receive a grant, as you know. Unfortunately, I don't have the list of salaries available to me, but I'm sure that's something that Leonora could provide, or the Chair of the Council on Aging.
Thank you.
Alderman Parente.
Thank you, through you, Chairman. And, Mr. Rodriguez, I just love your passion for, as someone said, our most vulnerable citizens, or some of them. I think oftentimes, the seniors in the community, especially given social isolation, need what you are providing to them. So thank you so much for that. Can you just tell us, I know this deduction that the Finance Committee had was mainly the $180 for capital improvement projects, but there was $1,000, a N99 reduction for something called the elderly nutrition contribution. Could you tell us what that is?
So interestingly enough, the elderly nutrition, that line item of $1,000 had sat there. And looking back, there wasn't really anything that was indicating what it was being used for exactly. The only thing I could find was it was possibly for the Meals on Wheels program, in case there was a need for it. So what was done was that that was moved over into, it was removed and placed into the office supplies, which was a need. So there was overall a $500 increase that the mayor had suggested we kind of move along with, Peter, that made sense, because we were looking to increase the office supplies as we were increasing our mailings to the membership.
Okay, great. And then...
No, go ahead.
On your wellness calls that you and your staff are making, what are the top concerns right now of our seniors in Milford?
You know, I will tell you, they have been positive, the calls that have been made. One person's in particular concern was having an audience so that he could sing to. This one person enjoys singing, and would often find people to sing to, and he doesn't have anyone to sing to. So when our caller calls him, he sings to her. Our seniors want to get back into our centers. They are lonely. They're not expressing all the time that they're lonely, but they're lonely. Our center was a place to gather. It's where your friends were, you know? A lot of our seniors thankfully have support at home, so there is either an adult child or a kind neighbor who is checking up on them every so often. And the ones that don't have anyone or are living in senior housing, they're relying on neighbors, and they're relying on calls like from folks like us that are calling in and checking up on them. But overall, their concern is, "When is this going to end?" is what we have. Most of our folks just want this to be done and over with, so that they can resume life as normal.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions from our Alderman for the Council on Aging? Hearing none. Thank you, Leonora, for your great presentation and answering all our questions. We're going to be moving on to the Fire Department, 51. I don't know whether it's Chief Edo. Are you on mute or not? Fire Department is our next organization on our agenda, page 51.
Mr. Chairman, I do see that our chief is online. There may be some microphone issues or some technical difficulties that are being experienced. I will try to offline find out what that is, and if it can be rectified. We may want to go to another city department while we straighten this out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what I'll do is, one, to Public Debt Service, page 78. The next department on our agenda will be Public Debt Service, page 78, while the chief of the Fire Department gets onto our agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up for the next set of department budgets, as is Peter Aradisi, our Finance Director.
Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to Public Debt Service, page 78? Seeing none, we're going to move it on to the next department organization on our agenda, which is the Employee Benefits, page 84. Employee Benefits, page 84. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to employee benefits?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, we are still working out the final figures, but Peter Aradisi and I, before this budget is voted upon, should be able to give you some good news with respect to our contributions to our health insurance. As you know, one of the cost drivers this year was contributions to our health insurance. It went way up. We have since, as you heard from Tanya Barnes, our HR Director, employed a new healthcare consultant, and their actuaries reran the numbers. And we are going to have new numbers to provide the Board of Aldermen prior to any vote. Again, it will be good news, I'm happy to report, but the details, we're checking again, just because we want to be cautious about any kind of good news these days in a pandemic. So we were reviewing the numbers with the healthcare consultant and their actuaries, but we'll report to you very shortly some positive news with respect to our health insurance and our stopgap coverage as well, that excess coverage we have for claims above and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions from our Aldermen on employee benefits? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. The next agency would be the Fire Department. They're back on. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I called on a number that Justin didn't recognize. I apologize. So I'm in my office, Chief Edo. I have Chief Bagley, Bernie Bagley, Chief Anthony Fabrizi, and Chief Ron Wedmore with us tonight in my office. And before we start, Alderman Parente, thank you for your concern for us. We do have an EEAP program in place here. We also use Lexington Group with the city. And I do believe that some of our members do use bridges as well. So thank you for that. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or someone else. Budget's pretty much exactly the same, flat, maybe even a little less than this year's budget.
Thank you, Chief. Any Aldermen have any questions for Chief Edo, Fire Department, page 51? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Chief. How you doing, Doug? I hope everything is well.
Thank you, everything is.
Okay. My concern are the PPEs. Are you guys, do you have what you need, anticipating greater amounts? Or could you elaborate on what you need and have, and how you're doing with it?
Certainly. We don't have enough. We could run out soon. We have avenues of getting them decontaminated, say. So we're sending down some out to Yale now, and reusing the N95s. We did order a lot of masks, and they're mostly surgical masks that came in. We did expedite a KN95, the Japanese equivalent, and to be honest with you, it's just no good. So we're not comfortable with any of them. We have enough for patients, but we are reusing the ones we have now. We do have an order, we get a few in from the state, you know, maybe 30 or 40 at a clip. We get a delivery tomorrow, we may get 30 more true N95 masks. We did order some, they're still way out, months out. But we keep ordering the PPE and make sure that we're ready for if, hopefully not, another wave comes. And again, for the future, if we ever need them.
Okay. What is the expenditure, what is your expenditure on these things at this point in time?
What are they, like 450 each, right? It, it really depends, yeah, but those, for those N95s, like $4,050 each. And we need hundreds of them, if not thousands.
So how much have you expended on all kinds of PPEs at this point in time?
I don't have a dollar amount just for that specifically. I have an overall of probably, probably about $120,000 that the Fire Department spent in the last six weeks since this was going on, just in equipment.
So how does that impact on your total budget?
Well, we are using some of it, but we have an expenditure from the, excuse me, from the city with the credit card through Peter. Peter can explain that better. And again, with this and also with the manpower, the overtime hours, we're hoping that eventually we can get reimbursed for some of this money in the future.
Are you saying reimbursed from feds, from the state? Or are you going to have to make some allowances within your budget itself? Or are you going to come back and have a shortfall?
Well, we are hoping to get some from the, the federal. We will have a shortfall. Typically, we do every year.
But would this be a greater impact on your budget? So that you're going to force you to come back for more money? Or what do you think?
Yeah, probably. This, this will, it's, this will definitely have an impact on our budget. There'll be, there certainly should be somewhat of a shortfall.
Okay, thank you and good luck. Be safe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to mention that there was a message put out through Demis, our region of Demis, for all small businesses that need not the type of PPE that our healthcare workers or first responders require, but a lesser level of PPE, that they will be distributing those, small business by small business for those that are requested. So tomorrow, we will put out a communication to our small businesses. I would appreciate if all the Aldermen will help us to promote that for anyone that needs PPE, face masks, cloth coverings for their employees that are small business, small, the small businesses in Milford. Things that are, are professional first responders, our firefighters, our police officers, our paramedics, one of the saving graces that we've had is the ability to decontaminate our N95s and other PPE through a partnership with Yale Hospital. We do bring on a weekly basis our face masks and they do decontaminate them all so that we can use them multiple times. And the chief can give you some more information about that as well.
That's right, and thank you, Mayor. In fact, the pickup, the Fire Department's doing a pickup as well for the small businesses, which would be Monday, May 4th, I believe, will be picking up the supply for them. You know, and, and quickly, since we're talking about it, I, I do have some, you know, I don't know when the Health Department went, but as, as of today, there's 443, so you know, approximately 450 positive cases in Milford and at least over 30 deaths, I think there's 26 in itself, just through the healthcare places. That leaves us with about, you know, 300 or plus that the Fire Department is transporting. And we've been in contact with these patients every day, eight to 10 calls a day, wearing the full PPE. So we are going through, but you know, it's a blessing that we can use this hydrogen peroxide spray and decontaminate these, these better masks. We do use a full Tyvek suit with booties and hoods. And we have, to the mayor, what you're saying, is we have a full decontamination station for our, our personnel and for the ambulances at the Siemens Lane facility. It's basically a hazmat incident and we're taking it as that. I've had, to date, I've only had one firefighter that tested positive. We had nine that were, eight that were looked at in a 14-day period, but none of them were positive, only one. And it just goes to show that the efforts that we're doing here are spot on. You can look at other fire departments in the air with 15, 20 guys out. Small fire departments like West Haven with five or six guys out. Ambulance company with 17. It's just, it's amazing. But I think we, you know, we hit the mark, we put our minds together. We were trying to be one, two weeks ahead, anticipating what's next and stay ahead, and we did. And I think the numbers of that just show.
Thank you, thank you for that, Chief. Just any other Aldermen have any questions for the Fire Department? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Chief Edo. It's nice to speak to you and thank you for battling this pandemic on the front lines. And please pass that along to everyone in your department.
Absolutely.
My question is, overall, what you requested, your budget, you've been reduced by $468,000. And just going through some of these line items, first and foremost, the educational supplement was reduced by $50,000. Can you just share with the members of the board exactly what that educational supplement entails?
Yeah, sure. My, I'm on, yeah. Absolutely, and there's some more in there I could, I could point out.
Right.
The educational supplement is for different certifications, for fire marshals, fire inspectors. This is all union contract, college credits. Our paramedics get stipends, all stipends and college credit money. So that's what all this is. And it's, it's not hard to figure out. If you look years ago, in the 18, we spent like 340. And we targeted that 325 would make it for this year, but it got cut unfortunately. And it's, but it was increased, to be honest with you, from, I think, last year. I think we were at 225, right? Did it go up 50?
Yeah, it went up actually, yeah, 50. Yeah, it was increased, yeah.
But it's not enough. Our budget was set with the mayor's recommendation. It was a wonderful day on December 3rd, when, when the budget was set. And we made some nice gains. And as you know, I think I started, I, I only did the wage accounts, personal services. I spoke to the board and they said, we really don't need to do the rest of them. The budget will make it work. And again, it's, you know, we, we asked for this money, we got it, we got some of it, we were close. But then something happened in the state and the mayor said, hey, listen, to all the departments, you have to cut back again. So he said anywhere between, I believe it was 200, 300,000. So me being an honest guy, I said, all right, 250 is good. So, you know, I went through the budget and I cut 250. So I cut money out of the wages, I cut money out of vacation relief. And then I had to go through and cut a couple other dollars out inside the other, the budget. But the bulk of it came out of the, the personal, the wages. And again, like I, you know, it's 95% of our budget is contractual.
Right, understood. Thank you, Chief. The other question I have that, the other line item that stands out to me is the communications equipment. You requested 34,000 and that was cut down to 15. That was like a $19,000 reduction. And communication equipment to me is a vital part of, you know, a first responder. So can you maybe highlight that as well?
Certainly. You're spot on on that, but it's, so I'll say, you know, like again, I'm a truthful guy. We, we put that in last year. We got a grant, we won the grant, and it was, it was to change all our radios, our communication. And we put the 34,000 in because that was our portion to pay for the grant. And this year, I just left it in, see if I could maybe use it again. But they, they caught on, the powers that be caught on and cut it down a little bit. So to be honest with you, I left it in there.
Okay. All right, Chief, well, thank you for answering my questions and all the best to you and your family, stay safe and we'll talk soon.
All right, I'll see you, Tony, you look great.
Thanks.
Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, Chairperson vitro, I appreciate it. Through you to Chief Edo. Hello, Chief, thank you for all the work that you're doing and to the, the men and women of the Fire Department. I wasn't going.
Three chiefs waving to you.
I know. It's hard to tell because the, the phone numbers, I only see your name. But you did say that they accompanied you and you mentioned them by name. So hello. Thank you for that summary. I wasn't going to mention it, this is a budget hearing, not a public hearing, but you brought up the decontaminated PPE equipment with the hydro, hydrogen peroxide. And even though that's new news and the appropriation is there, it was a stopgap measure as an alternative because the, the chain of supply has been held up for a variety of reasons. But there are concerns coming forward, and I just want to say that, and I thought I'd take a chance to say it publicly, that the decontamination process may be effective against the virus. And so the efficacy is still in question and so is the safety. So it's a double whammy. And the money has already been appropriated. We're desperate to keep the curve flat and all of that. But just know that going forward with, you know, first line professionals, that there is a lot of concern about that. So it's not just the answer to the supply chain prayer, all right? Just there's data coming out and, you know, I'm reading, reused respirators may not have been effectively decontaminated of the SARS-CoV-2 virus and other pathogens. And so, you know, just keep that in mind.
Well, that's true. And with these N95s, you have to fit test them as well, just like our, our Air Packs. And to do that, you're basically wasting that mask. And if I have 100 personnel, so I'd be wasting 100 of those.
Right.
To get, to make sure that we get the correct seal. But I got to tell you, the, all the other ones are no good. And I, I have a question, if you can answer this, where's 3M? Where, 3M made these masks, where, where are they? Where the heck are they? They should be looking around, making millions of these. They're the only, the Japanese ones or Chinese ones are no good. They're just no good. And I would not feel safe wearing that in that environment. I wear, I feel safe wearing our 3M N95. And you know what it came down to? The CDC changes their mind weekly as, as the event unfolds. And they're saying, well, okay, you can use them again. It wasn't that case when we started, but now we can use them again. Now we're trying to decontaminate, but I know we're off the subject with the budget.
Yeah, we are off the subject, but what else is more important? As long as you bring it up, the, there was an emergency use authorization and that's why the CDC changed its mind or its protocol. And the decontamination process has not undergone the same type of review as ordinarily approved or cleared device. And that's because of this EUA approval of the decontamination process. But just as Chief and, I mean, the amazing service. You, you click on 911 and in three minutes, you're there. And despite all the challenges, but just know that this is not data approved yet. Anyway, so Godspeed to all of you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Alderman Parente.
Through you, Chairman. I'm wondering if the mayor could let us know how we in Milford and other municipalities are working on securing these masks? What are the different methods besides it coming in from the state? How can we try to assist in getting these where they need to go as quickly as possible?
Mr. Chairman, it's Ben Blake. Through you to Alderman Parente, and I'll let the Fire Chief and our Fire Chiefs follow up. We are working through our region. Our Health Director really does chair that division of the Demis region too. So we do have a leg up from some of the other surrounding municipalities in terms of securing it through, through the state resources. We've looked privately, but some of our, some of our acquisitions through the private sector were not great because they were not the N95 masks. They were the KN95 masks, which may be good for non, you know, healthcare professional type use, non-first responder use. But at least our, our firefighters did not seem to think that those were as good as the N95 masks. But the real saving grace has been the decontamination of our existing stock. We've been able to get multiple reuses out of it. So we've been able to have the best type of PPE out there. It just means that we have to sanitize it professionally at Yale each week. The chief can talk to you a little bit more about that. We did also purchase a sanitation piece of equipment. It was about a $15,000 piece of equipment that we did get to sanitize gear and things of that nature. The chief can again review a little bit more about how that has helped us tremendously, making sure that we have the adequate protection for our first responders. But those are some of the things that we're doing. If there are any professional grade masks or other PPE that you have leads on, we're certainly willing to investigate that further. But we have, you really kind of let the, the regional Demis as well as some of the, you know, the private vendors take the lead as well. So Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, you're right. We're going through Demis Region 2. But again, you know, they're real, they're as surprised as we are. They're just not getting the stock either, whether it was from the national stockpile or whatever. There's, you know, lessons learned afterwards, we're going to find out what's going on. But the equipment just isn't there. And, you know, we're trying to secure it as, as best as we can. We are doing other vendors all over that we can, you know, where we can purchase these. In the, in the region, we're a level one. We, we don't even have to really ask. We get, we get delivered because we have the ambulance service. We provide the ambulance service for the town, for the city of Milford. So we get, you know, first choice of all this equipment, but we're not getting the proper equipment. So we're making do and that's it in a nutshell. The other thing is if, if we do get 1,000, 2,000, 10,000 3M N95 masks and we store them in our facility at Siemens Lane, you know, how long are they going to be good for? Because that was another thing, other ones that the state was giving us were the ones that were expired. So, okay, is it useful still? What's expired, the vapor barrier? I did see somebody, elastics were breaking. You know, we're putting a mask around your head and the elastic, we're, I could see that. All right, that, maybe that's why it expired. But can I do something to fix that, remedy that so that I could still use the mask? That was so many issues. We're, we, we got a long way to go with this one.
Any more Aldermen have any questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief Edo, for all the great work you do for the city of Milford. I wish that you and your staff. I wish that you and your staff and all the department stay safe and healthy amongst all the problems they're going through during this time. The next, you're welcome, Chief. The next item is going to be lights, hydrants, and water, page 62. Any Aldermen have any questions regarding lights, hydrants, and water? Alderman Tranquilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Peter. Peter, there was a lot of discussion in this department last budget season about street lighting. And we didn't have all the LED lights changed at that point last year. So where are we year-to-date for the streetlights total as of now? And have we saved as much as we thought we were going to?
Mr. Chairman, while it's Ben Blake, while our finance director does look up that information, I do want to give you a little bit of background. We do expect to save some additional money on our streetlights. We don't know exactly where as of yet. We may have some additional information soon. But where we may be lacking in this overall department is the water from the RWA for our hired, our hydrants, our fire service. Our fire service continues to increase exponentially above and beyond each and every year. We left it at the same rate as last year, just because we're not going to have those numbers by the time that you adopt the budget. But we do think that there may be a small deficit in the water accounts, the hydrant accounts. And perhaps there may be some savings in the street lighting accounts, but not much. It's a pretty tight budget for the overall department.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, while we're waiting for Peter to run some numbers, I just have a question for Mayor Blake.
Go ahead.
Mayor Blake, are we meeting the requests or needs of our residents where more lighting is needing, needed on streets?
Our police department does evaluate all the requests that come in. I know that you were involved with one request a couple of years ago up by Herbert Street, Hibbert Street. But they do look to see where we have issues as the requests come in. There is a balance that we have to strike between satisfying every residence request versus some of the other residents that just don't want the lighting in neighborhoods where they think it may be overpowering. So the police department looks at that, as does other city departments, to see if it's reasonable. We try to strike the right balance. Some we honor, some we make modifications for. We also take into account the cost of new streetlights, you know, annually. They can go anywhere between a couple hundred dollars and a couple thousand dollars per light, depending on the wattage and the type of light that is seeking to be installed.
I do remember, Mayor Blake, I do remember that conversation last year. I believe we were renting, we had to pay to have each streetlight replaced. And were we renting the lights also, or were we buying those outright?
So for the UI district, there's only one municipality, New Haven, that owns their streetlights outright. Milford does own some of our streetlights outright, like the ones downtown. We, the lamp posts, we do own those. But for the vast majority of our streetlights, the Cobra headlights that you see on utility poles, we do rent those from UI. Again, most municipalities do because they also service those lights. But we do pay a significant monthly charge to UI for the rental of those lights. And for each light that we install, the overall cost goes up by anywhere between a few hundred dollars and a few thousand dollars for each light out of the thousands that we presently have.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just to follow up, while we're still waiting for Peter.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm ready whenever the mayor and the Aldermen are finished with their discussion.
Mayor Blake, really quick. So we should save in the lighting department, as we should have last year. But the water accounts, we seem to be going over budget or coming close to budget year after year, at least last year and maybe possibly this year. Is it a charge that the water company is charging us that is making us go over? Is it, does that include the hydrant installations also?
Again, we budget for $6,000 for new hydrants, but the vast majority of this account is for our fire service. This is for the approximate 1,400 fire hydrants that we have in Milford. There is a formula that the RWA has that I have objected to. I have gone and sat at regional water authority meetings in New Haven and advocated, testified against the present formula and asked that they reconsider some of the mechanisms of the formula because it treats municipalities like Milford, in my estimation unfairly. There are different authorities out there. For example, MDC, which is the water authority in the Hartford region, they charge their member municipalities $0 for fire service. So that, some consideration on too. But it's been one of those things that I have been advocating to change the regional formula for RWA on this particular issue. We have approximately, not to kind of tangents, but it's expense that goes up each and every year. Municipalities like Milford, I think we pay more than any other town in the regional water authority, the Southern Connecticut Regional Water Authority, just because of the fact that we have so many hydrants and so many linear feet of lines to those hydrants. So I don't know if that answers your question with respect to our street lighting. I think we have approximately 7,500 streetlights. I can confirm that number, but I believe that's the approximation of what we have in Milford.
It does answer my questions. Thank you, Mayor Blake.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Tranquilly. While we haven't ended the fiscal year yet, it does appear that we may have some savings in the lighting account. Currently, we have spent 400 and about 462,000 of the 730,000 budget. So we have 268,000 available. But again, there could be more bills. But looking at the month-over-month activity, it does appear that there is some savings over last year.
Peter, I don't know if you can check, but do you remember what our cost was last year for specifically just the street lighting?
Yes, last year for street lighting, we spent $667,184. And we had saving, we ended the year with a small surplus of about $22,000. But in prior years, in 18, for example, we had to transfer money into the lighting account. But to your discussion, it does appear that for 19 and now for 20, we're seeing a gradual decrease in the street lighting expense.
As we should, because we did change over the LED. Thank you. I appreciate it, Peter. Thank you, Mayor Blake, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any more questions regarding lights, hydrants, and water? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just to follow up on Alderman Tranquilly in regards to street lighting. So Peter, you mentioned that there could be some more outstanding bills. Will you be able to possibly send out an email or get back to the board members of the projected outstanding bills prior to the budget vote?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Ginatasio. Yes, we would be happy to do that. I will speak to staff in the mayor's office. I know that the bills do flow through his office with Linda, and I will work with her to see what we can expect for year end.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions on the lights, hydrants, and water? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the emergency management, page 58. Any Aldermen with any questions pertaining to emergency management, page 58? Hearing none, we'll move on to the last department concerning the fire department would be CMed on page 88. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to CMed, page 88? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Just if Chief Edo is still online, I see that the overall CMed department was reduced by $16,195 at the Board of Finance. Was there any justification of why they reduced the, your request and the mayor's recommendation?
You know, I could say maybe Peter might know better. And not, not when I was present, I don't believe so. I think this changed afterwards. And I don't know if he got any new data on that.
Okay. And Chief Edo, can you just give us a brief background on the CMed department?
Sure. CMed is the Coordinated Medical Emergency Dispatch. It's very similar to what you see on television when our ambulances are out and the paramedics are calling into the hospitals. They do the patch. They do the signal to the hospitals. And the reason for that is either the state OEMS or the Department of Health. It's required. I don't know if it's statutory, but it needs to be a taped line. So basically, when the medics are on the field and they're assessing the patient and giving that information to the ER, it goes through CMed dispatch center and it's recorded.
Okay. And in regards to the ambulance service that you provide for the city, what is your cap on that? And as far as receiving revenue?
So the fire department's portion is 25% of the money's received. We get close to that, but we're spending that money on equipment. And in fact, we just bought two ambulances from that money in itself as well. So we have a 25% cap, but we rarely get there.
Okay, but Chief Edo, it sounds like this money or this service that's being provided is beneficial overall for the fire department and for the city?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It's twofold.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Edo. No further questions.
Any more questions pertaining to CMed? Hearing done, we're going to move on to the next department organizational is the insurance and bonds, page 85. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to insurance and bonds on page 85? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next department is the claims and refunds, page 85. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to claims and refunds? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next department, benefit and salary reserve, on page 106. Any Aldermen having any questions regarding benefit and salary reserve? I see none. Move on to the next portion, an agenda, the education audit fees. Education audit fees. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to education audit fees? Seeing none, move on to the next department. It's the school debt, page 93. School debt, page 93. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to the school debt? I see none. Move on to the next department would be the education employee benefits, non-teaching, page 93. Any Aldermen have any questions pertaining to the education employee benefits? I see none. We'll move on to the last department on tonight's agenda, the educational health insurance contributions, page 94. Any Aldermen have any question pertaining to the education health insurance contribution? I see none. Seeing no further comments, I will entertain a motion to recess until Wednesday, April 29th, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? We are in recess. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Safe evening. Thank you very much.